Hi, I'm Nancy Sarah, lead of 34th Senate House. Last council meeting, a lot of talk about using, not wanting to use, noneducational dollars for things. That was a big topic that night. And so, I went back and I realized, $127,340 to the Lou Edwards Group is not educational dollars. You approved the contract. I didn't even hear a discussion on it. It's for some surveys and some community outreach, so I don't know how that relates to educational dollars. Also, the $24,000 to the Leadership Associates for a superintendent search. Again, that is not educational dollars. A lot of talk last week. And then I can go on and on with all the different consultants that we pay here that are noneducational dollars. Also, I went online and I looked at Transparent California, and I noticed that the benefits that the Board receives for 2013 was over $55,000. Now, that's noneducational dollars, and that's every year. That's per the California Transparency Website. Again, if we're going to think outside the box on how to save money and how to spend it maybe on a playground for Lago, for Laurel, to take some of those maintenance items that are, by the presentation we had last week, last month, or whatever it was, a couple weeks ago, were pretty dire, they look like. So, when we're trying to get some additional funding, let's take a look at all the different ways we can do that, and not just always wanting to spend more money on bonds and stuff. But these are noneducational dollars, and I just wanted to show you that there may be our ways to save some money for the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I see anybody with a word?
Hi, I'm Susan Fujioka, and I've actually spoken here before on the oil operations in Brea. And I'm here to hopefully get your support on creating an oil advisory committee, and I will tell you why. I'm also here on behalf of the Olinda Elementary Moms, because they couldn't make it tonight because they had a corresponding PTO meeting at their school. And I believe, I've never been to a school meeting before, but I believe these go on year-round. I'm not really sure. So they will be at the next one. So one of the reasons, one of the things I want me to bring up is the health and safety issue, and I'll tell you why. I don't know if you are familiar with the 1998 partnerships between public schools and private developers' report. It was an investigative report of when DeBrae High School was built. And basically, it states that the site was problematic, and basically, the school should not have been built. There are oil wells that were built on top, the school was built on top of oil wells, and they were supposed to be abandoned. And according to the Department of Conservation, which is the dogger that oversees oil regulations of the oil companies for the oil operations, they were saying that the proposed mitigation measure did not satisfy the California Department of Conservation's Division of Oil and Gas. And in a letter stating by the project manager, it said, "The Department of Conference Surveillance's Division of Oil and Gas has reviewed the draft ERR for the Brea-Olinda High School project and has determined that our comments have been largely ignored." One of the reasons why I'm here is that there seems to be a concern over at the Olinda Elementary School, because there are wells behind there, plus there is the corresponding gas plant that sits to the right of the school, near the school property. There was also a report, sorry, I'm tired, I've been flying all night, so I just got in, so I'm getting tired. So, there's a Frack Tracker Alliance Report, and basically, it was reports on the hydraulic fracturing stimulation of oil drilling near California schools and within school districts disproportionately burdens Hispanic and non-white students. Well, basically, what this report does, it mapped all the wells near schools in the low-income areas, and Brea actually ended to be on top in this report. And so I called him, and I said, "Why are we in this report?" I said, "We're not in the highly Hispanic, low-income type of school district." And he said, "Well, your school," he says, "your school district," he says, "is largely, you have the most wells within the location of your schools." And he says, "It's a concern." So, this is the dogger map, and so I don't know if you can see it, but all the black dots are wells. And so what I did is I mapped it out, so these blue little circles, you probably can barely see it, but the blue circles are the, some of the schools, they were not built around the wells, and these are the older schools. The newer schools are built smack in the center of the wells for nearby. So, what the Olinda Moms wanted me to break up is, what plan do you have if there were to be an accident, like a well explosion, an earthquake? These oil operators are supposed to have a switch, that switches off the wells if there's a magnitude 5.0 or greater earthquake. The problem with that is in the city of Brea, and I didn't notice until it's here, that there is absolutely no one on the city who oversees oil operations here in the city of Brea. So, they wanted, they went back to their procedures and found there really is no evacuation procedures for the schools if something were to happen. I'm not sure. So they wanted to know possibly what could be put together, or if you do have a plan, to make it known. There was a well blowout in Colorado last week, and because the fire department did not know what the chemicals that were being injected into this well, what they were, they just had to let the fire continue, and it just had to burn itself out. There is a well behind Olinda Elementary, it's what they call a waste disposal well, and that's where they were dumping the chemicals in there after the fracking operations. Well, they recently switched over to what they call a water flood well, but either way, you've still got the chemicals that are down there in the ground. Now, because that is what they call a well that has trade secrets, I don't believe the fire department will even know what is in that well until the actual fire, and that's if Len Energy or whoever, Brightburn or whoever is there decides to give them a chemical list. Most of the oil well companies have their own independent fire department in case of emergencies, but the oil well companies here, they depend solely on the Brea Fire Department. And so if there were a catastrophic act, I mean, all of us are going to be calling the Brea Fire Department. So the question is, who is going to get to be served first? Is it going to be the residents? Is it going to be the school? Is it going to be the oil wells? So basically, you know, I would like to see some type of safety plan or evacuation plan for the school districts, which takes me back to the point that we do need some type of oil well advisory oversight board committee or something, and we need probably a school board member on one of these types of committees. I personally don't want to do it because it's a lot of work, but I think it's a concern, and I think that's something that Brea should have. From my documentation, my research, I believe we have about 1,500 wells here in Brea, which is almost doubled that of Long Beach or Hinton Beach. But I just think there needs to be some kind of safety plan, and the Olinda Moms are concerned, they're very concerned that there seems to be one lacking. All they basically have is just, I guess, a kit for earthquakes, and they have earthquake drills, but it doesn't go beyond that. Thank you. I think they'll be here at the next meeting. Thank you.
Do we have any other opportunities to hear from our committee?
Hello, I'm Diane Stites, Olinda resident volunteer at Laurel Elementary, and I want to thank the school board members that agreed on April 20th to move the progress forward on Lago's Laurel Project. And I wanted to know that we really appreciate that, and that if you, the district, work with the city, there's more that we can do together than we can do separately. I know that it's complicated, and there's lots to do, lots of hurdles, but we look forward to this progressing. And I just have a couple of questions, and I'd appreciate if you guys could correct me if I get anything that's incorrect. My understanding from our research and everything is that the land does belong to the OUSD, and that you guys are the fiduciaries, the school board, so, you know, you guys are the current guardians of the land, and it's been over 20 years since there's been anything new put in the land. And so, we looked at this as an opportunity, and I think that's where, like, I think you guys also see it as an opportunity, but do you? And do you, you know, to bring this up to the standard of the other playgrounds and parks in Brea. And what I understand too is that it's a playground park, that it's, it's not really like part of the park and part of the playground, it's one acre, and it's, it's not mutually exclusive. It's not like you can draw a line in the park and say it's a park's park and it's a playground. It's just that since the 1975 original agreement between the city and the school district, and then there was the 1994 addendum for the Lago's Laurel, that this is a share of property, but the district owns it. And so you guys are in control of how this project goes forward. And this is a big cooperative opportunity, because the city's interested, and while we were disappointed that the joint meeting got canceled between the city and the school district from May 12th, we know it's a postponement. And we look at this as something that you guys both see as, okay, let's get prepared, and go from our conceptual plans to our real plans. What can you really put into it? And have the city answer that same question. So you guys do that amongst yourselves first. You guys both get your conceptual plans, two your real plans, and then can get together and say, "What can we really do together?" And that's my understanding. So again, just want to make sure that I'm clear, because I think that with you guys being the guardians of this property, and that it is in a very dense area of Brea, where there are a lot of families that live in apartments, they don't have backyards, you see this opportunity that they can get an education from that play equipment when they're in school, when they're not. And that, that's why I look at this as, what's going to happen next? If it will work out with you guys in the city to work together to do this, what will be those next steps to move this project forward? And I know you guys have been working on it, and again, thank you for that, we appreciate it, we know it's complicated, we know that the joint use agreement expired over 10 years ago, so it's got some problems, there's things that need to be figured out for today and for the future. And so, we would like to know, what is the timing of the project? How do you see it going forward? And with these next steps, when will this joint meeting with the city that's been postponed, when will it be rescheduled by the school board? And also, just when will we go from that conceptual plan to a real plan? Thank you.
Do we have any more?
I'd just like to address, I know the board said, sorry, I'm a little tired. The board said that they didn't want to spend money on noneducational things, but I believe as parent and as a person that works at the school, that play is educational, that children learn through problem solving, they learn through sharing, they learn through taking turns, they learn from following the rules. And I believe part of the basis of the common core, or the new toilet that we're instilling, is for the children to understand problems and find solutions. And each child to find a different solution to the same problem through their interpretation. And they can learn this on the playground. You're teaching in the classroom, but they can also learn that on the playground. So I have a hard time classifying a playground or play as noneducational. That's just my two seconds left. Sorry, not sorry.
I think we get the gist of it. Appreciate you speaking up. Do we have any others at this time? At this point, let's move forward with our agenda. Approval of the minutes, recommend the Board of Education approve the minutes on the April 20th, 2015, very new board meeting. Do we have a motion to approve? This is cool, this move, do we have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that to Mr. Hobby. Any questions? If you did, you don't get an opportunity to contact me, but already seeing no questions or hands on the air, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The record show motion carries 7-0. Moving forward to the consent calendar, generally, routine items are approved by one motion without discussion. The superintendent or designee requests an item to be approved in the consent calendar voted upon separately. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Mr. Rolino and Mr. Todd as a second. Do we have any items that you'd like to have addressed or questioned? Let's move forward this time. See if I have anything you'd like to hook up, I don't see so. Seeing nothing at this time, let's move forward with the motion. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All those opposed, say no. Motion carries 7-0, the record show. Moving forward to public hearing, again, there is no public hearing at this time. Action items from the superintendent department, none. Human services expulsion recommendations, student 2014-08. Recommend the Board of Education Act on the recommendation of the administrative hearing panel regarding the expulsion of student number 2014-08 to expel for two semesters, the second semester of the 2014-2015 school year and the first semester of the 2015-2016 school year for violation of Education Code Sections 48900K, disruption of school activities defined as an authority, 48900H, attempted committed sexual assault or sexual battery is defined by criminal code and 48915C for sexual assault or sexual battery. Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Hall.
Mr. Todd, sir. I would like to move the expulsion recommendation with the following amendment. Line three, after it says the 2014-15 school year, the first semester of the 2015-16 school year, I would like to inject and suspend the expulsion of the first semester of the 2015-16 school.
Do we have a second for that amended motion? We have a second by Mrs. Williams. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, to get clarified.
Thank you, Mrs. Flaherty.
Thank you, Mrs. Flaherty. I do believe that if you look at the expulsion recommendation that is in the confidential documents that accompany this expulsion, that is the accurate recommendation of the administrative hearing panel, which is not reflected in this statement here. So just for the record, the actual recommendation of the administrative hearing panel was a two semester expulsion and a suspension of both semesters of the expulsion. I just want that to be corrected for the record, and then I do recognize that Mr. Todd has amended the recommendation to reflect a suspension of only the second semester of the expulsion, which is in fact the first semester of the 2015-16 school year.
So of next year.
Of next year.
And the expulsion of the rest of this year?
Yes, yes.
So expelled, directly, just want to make it clear, expelled this year and next year, the next semester we're going to suspend.
Yeah, in essence, expelled for both semesters.
Yeah, I understand.
But suspend the second and the first semester of the 15-16.
So or the second, the second one?
Correct.
Just to make it clear.
And when we use the word suspend, it is not without consequence, it is not without, or without that we go forward with it. What does it mean when we, and we know, and I know, for our audience, what does the word you phrase suspend expulsion mean to?
The actual act is that the expulsion is a two semester expulsion, which means that it is an expulsion in fact out of the district for two semesters. However, with the suspension of the enforcement of the expulsion for the second semester, you basically put aside the expulsion and suspend the enforcement of it. However, if there are any consequences that necessitate disciplinary action of a serious nature, then the suspension of the expulsion is revoked, and the student would then be immediately on the expulsion for the remainder of that period. And there is not an additional hearing, the hearing in the matter has already been addressed.
So, bottom line, student's on a very short, very tight leash, and watched very closely.
Absolutely.
Without any leeway and any appeal. Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Rolino, sir?
Only of course, and I don't know exactly how this follows, and this is a complex matter, so I'm going to try to pick number of the category if that's possible. I assume, though, we are not, the recommendation from Board Member Todd was not to follow the recommendation of the committee. And I'm assuming to a certain degree, the parents may already know of the recommendations, that's a published document, right? So, I assume we're going to do what the recommendation was.
The parents, yes, the parents in this matter do fully understand their due process rights to a hearing, also understand that what the recommendation is of the administrative hearing panel, they do understand that. I personally had a conversation with the parents, informed them what the recommendation was. They also, she also fully understands, parents also fully understand that that is simply a recommendation to the Board of Education, and that ultimately, the Board of Education is a body that has the authority to make the final decision in this matter. I also afforded the opportunity once again for the parent to come and address the board in closed session on this matter.
That was my understanding.
And so, all due process rights have been provided to the parent in this matter.
Thank you. Do we have the motion clearly for you to move? Motion's been amended to re-suspend a second semester of 2015-2016, we can say. All those, I'm sorry, Mr. Todd? Yes, sir. Please.
First semester.
First semester.
Very good, first semester.
Suspend and suspend first semester.
Thank you.
Of next year.
Of next year.
Because the first semester of this year is come and go.
I got it. That's the one that we're not suspending.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, we clear? I think we are. All the heads are nodding affirmatively. All those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Let the record show motion carrying 7-0. Moving forward, business services notice of completion, Erickson Hall Construction Company. Recommend the Board of Education accept completion and approve filing the notice of completion for Erickson Hall Construction Company for the seismic repairs and reconstruction work in Fanning Elementary School cost $350,000 from our general fund. Do we have a motion to approve? Mrs. Flanders is moved, do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Flanders.
Second.
Mr. Rolino is second, and thank you, Mr. Rolino. Any comments or questions to staff or staff of the company?
Yeah, just a quick report. So back on October 13th, 2014, the Board of Education awarded a contract to Erickson Hall Construction Company, and that was in an amount of $3,599,000. And that was for the site we prepared to reconstruction, Fanning Elementary School. The contract's now substantially complete, since we moved back in the building today, and all the jewelry work is done. We've got a couple punch list items, but that contract is definitely substantially complete. So the Board of Education approval of the notice of completion will allow the district to file the notice with the county warrant, and then after 35 days, if there are no challenges filed by any subcontractors or any material providers, then the district, or the contract would be entitled to any remaining funds held by the district. So staff's recommending that the Board of Education accept, approve, and complete and approve filing a notice of completion of the county warrant. And just to give the board a quick update on the $3 million contract with Erickson Hall, you recall as part of that contract were $830,000 in contingencies that were built into that contract. And today, the district's approved approximately $343,000 of the $850,000. And it looks like at this point that there'll be substantial savings on this contract that we'll be happy to report. I'm guessing in about two or three weeks, when we finish up the final applications after we receive those from Erickson Hall. So I think we've got some good news to report on, some savings on this project as well.
Always like to hear that. Well, we have a motion on the floor. Staff reported. All those are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show, motion carries 7-0. Resolution 15-14, membership of the Alliance of Schools for Cooperative Insurance Programs, ASCIP. Recommend the Board of Education, resolution number 15-14, declare the Brea, Olinda Unified School District's membership and the Alliance of Schools for Cooperative Insurance Programs for self-funding property, liability insurance, and access insurance, and... What's that type of word? What's the word supposed to mean?
Instruct.
Instruct?
Or instruct.
I thought it was Swedish, so I didn't quite know.
Instruct, yeah. I think it's Spanish.
I wanted to put in a little C from here. Instructs Dr. A.J. Skip, or his designee, to accept the joint agreement on behalf of the district effective July 1, 2015. We have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Todd has moved.
Second.
Is he a second? Do we have a quick report? I know it's a roll call. Thank you for the question.
Yes, yeah, quick report. This is a resolution to approve the coverage for the district property and liability insurance coverage directly with the Alliance of Schools for Cooperative Insurance Program, which is abbreviated ASKIP, and this is effective July 1 of 2015. And just to give you a little bit of background information on this change, the district's currently a member of the Southern Orange County Property and Liability Joint Powers Authority, and has been a member of that JPA since 1981. Currently, four districts that are part of that JPA, ourselves, Oceanview, Newport Mesa, and the Orange County Department of Education. That JPA was formed at the last school district to collect and pool their resources to self-insure property and liability claims. The JPA self-insures losses up to $50,000, and then anything over this amount are self-insured through the JPA's participation in the ASKIP self-funded pool. And ASKIP also provides the risk management and program administration services for this JPA that we're currently in. So, the background part on this, at the end of December, this past December, one of the members of the JPA submitted a letter of intent to withdraw, and because we only have more members that are part of this JPA, it's a small JPA, that's a big deal. So during February, actually, this presented the remaining three members an opportunity to assess the potential of a smaller JPA within the much larger ASKIP JPA. So the thought was, we'd go out and take a look at what it would be like if we were to form a JPA within another JPA, but the cost structure just didn't improve, that it wouldn't work out well. So during February and March, the JPA met with, met to explore the options for moving the Southern Orange County Property and Liability JPA with ASKIP effective July 1, 2015. And so, each district basically went out and took a look at all their options, and all of them came back and with the same conclusion that going with ASKIP JPA was going to be the most viable solution, given the amount of time that was involved. And so by joining ASKIP direct, the district's going to secure the same coverage as we currently have through the existing JPA. Should we decide at a different time down the road, you know, nine months from now, if we'd like to withdraw from the ASKIP JPA? We can do that, terminate coverage at the end of any fiscal year by notifying ASKIP executive committee in writing, at least 90 days prior to closing ASKIP's fiscal year. So if we put in a 90-day notice within the end of their fiscal year, which I believe is the same fiscal year as the district's, we'd be able to withdraw from that debt program. So, again, after taking a look at all the different options, staff recommended that we do move forward, move toward the ASKIP self-funded pool effective July 1, 2015. Any questions?
Seeing no questions from the board, this is a roll call move.
Hi. Mrs. Flanders?
Aye.
Mr. Hobby?
I have a second.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Rolino?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye. Let the record show six, go with one abstention. Moving forward, information...
I'm certified on behalf of Mr. Hobby, his abstention is a result of his employment contract consent to the ASKIP, if the appropriate group abstained from this vote, although I'm sure he supports the student.
And we appreciate his awareness of that. Going forward, quarterly investment report, this information is provided by government code section 53646. No board action is necessary for the investment report.
Yeah, so it could report back to copy the quarterly investment report, and the report shows the status of the district's cash investments as of March 31st, 2015. And you can see, combined yields really hasn't changed much since our last quarterly report. Quarterly investment as of March 31st yielded about 34 percent, and the Treasury Office is forecasting a slightly lower yield. Originally, they were forecasting about a 0.49 percent yield for the year, and now they're revising that down slightly, but not a lot changed in that regard. So if any questions?
Do we have any questions of staff? Thank you for the concise report, we appreciate it. Next item, Laurel Playground.
Certainly. I have been, at our last meeting, the board had given us direction to proceed with potential plans, or looking at how we might be able to have a total all-in project, have a Laurel Playground of around $250,000. So, working... So, working with the folks at Calendar Associates, who have done preliminary planning and preliminary budget, I had talked to them right after the meeting. We were, I was under the impression and understanding that they would be here this evening to share some designs. We've shared a proposal back and forth, starting on Wednesday. We were going back and forth on the proposal. I believe the soft costs were a bit on the high side. Their initial proposal was for $48,000 to design a $200,000 facility, which is a bit on the high side. We agreed that we would work towards another number. At the time that Friday, Thursday, we were pretty attentive together, we thought we had an agreement that might work with, for us, around $41,000 for the soft costs of designing construction work. But as we worked through that Friday, and today, Monday, when we were working through it, we basically had exhibition for scope. And at that price, they want the scope to be particularly limited, and so, they're not able to be here today to discuss concept designs. They did share some thoughts with us, so, and told us in the next steps in this process. The first is that they do believe that the $200,000 budget is not a fat budget for a playground redesign, and that there may be things that the board would consider to, again, maximize the play equipment that would be available in the design. One of those would be not necessarily following the conceptual design, completely reshaping the playground play spaces themselves, new walkways and whatnot. The hard costs will eat into playground equipment costs. And the second would be that the initial proposal was on a rubber, resin rubber surfacing, and they suggested that looking at engineered wood fiber may be another way to reduce costs and then increase the value to the playground structures themselves. They would like to be able to come and present these concepts to the board. We weren't able to get to a place where they were willing to do that tonight. So, we'll need to invite them back. At the same time, on the April 20th, or beginning of the board gave us the permission to execute a master agreement with LPA to look at different projects. I have a subject to get on today, and we're on the final thinking part of that agreement. I also like to get a quote from LPA for these same services to see if we can't get the soft costs in a more reasonable perspective. I have some concerns when we're looking at a 20% to 25% soft cost on a project that has no furniture equipment and no other things like that. So, I'm sorry that we weren't able to move this forward greatly tonight, but we do know that they're willing to work with us at a particular price point, and we'll continue to work with them, work with LPA, bring back another set of proposals to you when we probably meet again on June 8th or May, or maybe May 18th is the play recognition night, so we'll do no action items on June 18th at all.
Very good. Thank you for the report. Yes, Mrs.?
Hi. We also had discussed about looking at the joint use agreements. Has any discussion happened on that?
Yes, Mr. Donald and I have discussed the joint use agreement status. They were, again, as has been cited before, crafted quite some time ago and updated a bit. I will take some responsibility for the fact that they're not done. And because at the time that it was being discussed to bring them back in, Scott Malcomus, who was the community services director of the city, and I could not come to conceptual agreement on what a shared use concept looked like.
How could it work being shared?
Shared. And Mr. Donald was not aware of this, I'm not trying to blame Mr. Malcomus, he's no longer with the city. But we made some several attempts at, so, and talking to him, there is really nothing wrong with the joint use agreement that we have in place. All staff of the city and the district is operating as if that agreement was still in place. Mr. Malcomus's perception was that they wanted to expand the use into our school park or our school playgrounds at any time that we were not using them at no cost. And then his concept was that if we wanted to use a city park, we would pay premium and only on days that they weren't previously scheduled. But I said that doesn't sound like a joint use agreement to me. So, it kind of stalled out, and then because operating as if has not been a problem for us, it hasn't really been a priority, but for Mr. Donald and I, we both would like to get this back in front of the council and the board before our departures in July.
Do I have June 14?
It'll be June 14th, that's my target. It shouldn't be difficult because it gave us, if between he and I, we realize we're not going to be changing the major terms, our concept would be to be able to develop a master plan joint use agreement. And then every site would be an appendix. And so, there may be lots of discussion about an appendix. You know, when we talk about our use of the sports park, or their use of the limited play fields, our use of, their use of the Laurel Playground, or those types of things. But the overall joint use agreement should be pretty reasonable put together for all of us. And then the real conversation is, again, in the policy decisions, as it relates back to a discussion about Laurel Playground or a Lagos Park being supported by the city, is that what are the policy decisions about restrooms? What are the policy decisions about lights? What are the policy decisions about hours of operation and days of use and maintenance? Once those policy decisions are made, it's easy to incorporate those into, and reduce those to an agreement. And that's when the joint use, or the joint meeting with the council and the board will be most productive, when both parties understand a level of commitment that they want to put into the project, and also then wish to have a healthy discussion of policy issues related to a half a dozen key decision points. And if we have an agreement on the key decision points, then there are other kinds of discussions that can take place. And so, I think as Diane stated, from my perspective, it wasn't a cancellation, it was a postponement until the planets are better lined up to have a better productive meeting.
Mrs. Lyons?
So, I just want to understand the proposal that they were giving. We had talked about the scope of project that would include, might be partnered with from the city. And then it sounded like, at the end of that discussion, there was some direction that you'd go and find, you know, what we would be able to do on our own, if there was no other assistance available, or that didn't work. So, is what you're talking with them about, is that the limited scope project, or is that the expanded project?
Limited scope for phase, basically phase one is what we've talked about, which would be the hardscape reconstruction of the playground areas. The hardscape reconstruction that would set the foundation for entry gate off of the alleyway, and some of the other features there, and the reconstruction of the elementary play equipment itself, creating and basically an empty path for the lower age group playground equipment or park equipment that wouldn't be necessary for a school that uses it for grades one through three. There's no reason to have a top lot in a one-through-three playground. There might be a need of a top lot in a park. And so, the phase one was the reconstruction of that, again, with fully made compliance, not only on access issues to this surface itself, but to the actual play equipment, where a non-ambulatory student who's confined to a wheelchair can actually participate in play activities by rolling their wheelchair up ramps or into a play equipment, and be able to participate in ways that students who can run around in play can as well. So, this is really a phase one thing. Now, there is a sense that all the planning that's gonna go into that will have some benefit into phase two or three, because you will have already done all of the hardscape. So, there is a sense that that $41,000 for architectural services, design services, and making sure that the compliance issues are accurate, getting those into DSA, monitoring the construction in phase one, would have some benefit on future projects, should they go forward. But if the interest of the board is to work on the playground itself, biggest bang for your buck in the playground area is to not reconfigure the play surfaces. You get the bigger bang for your buck in that arena. Now, unfortunately, that may have...
Negative impacts on partnering with...
Negative impacts on the longer range.
Right.
But, I mean, I think that those are important decisions, and because we are trying to squeeze them down significantly on their design fees, they want to make sure that their scope is very clearly defined. And so, if we go through this process and we want to use Calendar Associates for this purpose, one of the first things they're gonna want to do is have me with you folks to actually narrow down and nail down what you want to see in scope, and then they'll go from there. So, we may have somewhat of a flexible contract with them that has a maximum contract value that may be reduced, should the scope of the project get reduced through court discussion.
It's kind of getting, our question is getting lost in our last conversation, because we talked about, there was a lot of discussion about what we would be willing or what we could see the district participating in a project that really is the playground. But if we limit the scope and we reconfigure it so that it can't have an invitation for a larger project, we make that decision and it's done, and it sounds to me like what we've been given, we're right in the ballpark of what we thought we would be contributing to a project that could be expanded. So, I'm wondering why we would go down that path if we're talking about the same amount of money that we'd be willing to contribute.
When we, they initially did the estimates of the cost, it was based on this conceptual plan. And in order to get hard construction costs for you, to be able to say, yes, this is, yes, I can bid this project and you'll get it for, you know, under $200,000. They just want to make sure that, you know, they're going down the right path. There's no wiggle room in this contract, from their perspective, to design one thing, have the board change their mind, and then have to do it again. So, they just want to make sure the board's committed to a design, and they're willing to implement that design, but they just want to make sure the board's on the right page, or the same page, not the right page, whatever the page is, the same page, and that they will not be asked to redesign it after the fact, because that will push them out, from their perspective, outside of their contract scope.
Mr. Lino?
No, I have a question, only specific to what was asked by one of the audiences. You know, this would be the only park we own, I guess?
Well, we own the junior high school land, which has used as basketball courts and softball fields and that kind of thing.
Should we pay for those? Or should we pay for some of them?
Those are, again, part of the longer standing joint use agreement date. My understanding is the city put up money and the likes of things for the basketball courts and softball fields.
Actually, yeah. Two people, Tim Martin and Reson Paul, thought leaving it out. But, you know, my question would be, and I'm not saying we should do this or don't do this, but I certainly still have no interest in having a park. And maybe it's time for us to look at, still building the same, you know, the right thing, the complete thing, but that we, at the same time, you know, totally give them the park, and let them handle all the other stuff that goes with it, you know, putting, maintaining, and kind of do that. But the bottom line for me is, I still don't want to have any ownership in this thing after 3 o'clock. You know, very, that's how I feel. So, I don't know, and that doesn't mean we shouldn't build the whole thing. That's, doesn't mean we still can't joint use and make the work together. But I think we should be looking at, at the same time, as part of the discussion, how do we say, okay, here it's yours, you know, we'll lease it to you and, you know, give them, charge a dollar a year like they, you know, give us a given deal, whatever it might be, so that that makes it easier for them to really have ownership of the park. Just an idea.
And I think one of the challenges we have is we're, you know, we're trying to move as quickly as possible, while at the same time having a very uncertain path as to what the ultimate destination is. I know that, that there was a high expectation that the joint council, the city meeting on May 12th would answer all those questions. But from my understanding, that the council has not yet committed to a particular value to this project. And so, you know, we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. Do you want to spend the money to design something that somebody's not gonna pay for? Or do you want to design, spend your money on the things that you can pay for, and how fast do you want to go? One of the dilemmas for this is that all the ducks need to be in a row in order to make wise financial decisions about contracts. And we're just not there yet. And I don't, we're really in this chicken and egg argument, and I don't know how to get past it initially. I think the board made an aggressive step by establishing an actual contract value of $250,000 for this piece of it. And maybe the council will make a similar or compatible aggressive step and allow us to then take the next step. If they don't do that, I'm not sure how I can advise the board to move forward.
Yeah, what would you have to recommend? So, yes, I just feel that we have, we've gotten to a certain point where we have to give the city council some time to make their decision. And I don't know what that is, whether it's 30 days, 60 days. But if they don't, if they don't allocate dollars, then we're not talking about a park. We're really just talking about our responsibilities and taking care of what we're obligated to do for the students of Laurel. And so, it's just giving them enough time to, to figure out whether they're gonna come along.
Except that you're still, as I pondered, I guess, I would respectfully ask President Hall to pull the board and see if they're interested in developing a standalone project for the playground, and knowing that we won't have any participation from anything else. Or are we interested in at least exploring an expanded project that maybe the city council could be involved with and look forward in that direction?
You know, my concern with that deal would be, and maybe I'm interpreting the same email, I think we all got it. The consultant basically said, it's not fat, $200,000. In fact, he stated that before he'd go further, he thinks we need to meet with us. So, I interpret that as him saying, I don't think you guys may be giving me enough money, I'm not sure.
For a standalone project?
But right, before we do this, we better be careful. So, I think us committing to a non-anything right now would be extremely foolish. Just making this clear with you there.
Well, school districts upgrade playgrounds all the time. And they, there are various landscape architects or playground manufacturers that come out and do this. And we have companies that we've worked with in the past. And we have playgrounds that need some upgrading that we're planning to address in the summer work. So, I mean, this one consultant's opinion does not, you know, make or break what we're gonna do. And so, I just feel that we have to give, we have to give some sort of timeline to, to whether or not the city is gonna commit funds. And then if they, if they, if they say that they're not at this time because their priorities have changed, then we, as a district, we need to move forward on our obligation for the playground at that point.
You know, and I frequently just said, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, you know, it's gonna come out this way. I think you just contradicted Gale, because Gale said, let's just not do it, not start doing ourselves, even though, so let's do it as a joint. Let me just finish, but meanwhile, we may not know 30, 60, 90, 120, whatever numbers you just used, if they're involved. So, that means wherever we're going towards may be wasted or not done well. Because honestly, if we were doing it ourselves, it may not be what that looks like phase one, two, three, four.
Well, I believe what I, and Gale's here, so we don't have to deep, deep...
I tried, I interpreted what you said.
But, but, you know, the board has expressed interest in wanting to see if the city wants to partner with us on this. And so, so, we got to our number that we felt was our ceiling. And so, so, let the city decide whether they're gonna partner, and let's let them. But I'm also saying, at some point, the train is gonna leave the station for us, and we may have to enter into an agreement on our own, because, because we can't just tell the students there that wait indefinitely until the city decides.
You know, I agree with you 100%, except for one thing. It almost seems to me if that was the case, we should abandon the idea of getting it done for the summer. If we really, truly want to give the city opportunity to build a park together, okay? Then maybe, and I'm not just saying I'm for this, by the way, but maybe we need to abandon the whole idea of getting it done for the summer. Was they, I read an email, and I don't know who sent it to me, but I read an email, I think from the mayor, I don't know who sent it to me, it wasn't to me, maybe also, I don't know. And it basically said, you know, they still gotta discuss it, and they gotta figure out if they're gonna get funding and all these things. So, I'm disagreeing with what he just said. And I just think that, so why, so why, if your goal is truly to get a park built, then shame on us for rushing towards it, maybe we just have to say, we have to wait another 36 months, if that's the case.
I didn't skip it, make statements that it probably will not be ready for the start of the school year.
You said.
And so... You talked about other playgrounds, that you were, you mentioned-
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were-
-other playground projects that would be done.
Yeah.
I thought you meant Laurel.
Because, because we talked about a list of other playgrounds.
Excuse me, I, I thought you meant Laurel.
No, no, no.
I apologize. I was confused.
No, 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 sorry, sorry.
I told you, I'm, I'm-
Okay, so.
I apologize, that's what I thought you were talking about.
No.
Well, and I think it would be helpful for city council to know that we're interested in a partnership, and I think that's where we need to pull the board and say, "Are we interested in that partnership?" So that we can say, and pull the board, and there is an interest.
And with a little understanding, just as Mr. Hobbie described, it might end up that we might be doing it on our own, and that's okay.
Which means we still have to investigate getting, which means we still have to investigate getting a standalone vote?
But it may not be this company, like, I don't, I don't think it might be a company.
Yeah. Because-
I have a few-
Because if they feel like their number is a hard-
Sure, I, I don't, it doesn't matter to me, but my point is, I don't think you could walk away from your deciding until you get to that.
Exactly, that's what I was trying to say. Yeah, exactly. But we're going to give the city a, a little time to-
I hope we decided that last one, I hope we decided that last, last time. I just thought, I asked, and I'm going to still ask, that we don't just go down that road until we know that they're willing to do it, because shame on us, we might be wasting our money, and by the way, not getting what our kids need, which would be a terrible justice.
Well, enjoying the spirited debate and the perspectives I offered. I think that giving direction to staff at this time might be a little preemptive, only because tomorrow's study session has the city council examining the topic, and that suggests that we allow them, you know, that opportunity. I think that what personally speaking, when we made the $250,000 overture, it said what our level of commitment was and what we're willing to do. I don't think we need to go back and share that with them again. If they can't read that message, then they're not paying attention. I do like the idea, as Mr. Hobbie says, that at some point, it's got to, you get off the horse or you ride the horse. You know, I personally think that, you have said that 90 days, because I want my kids to have that playground sooner rather than later. However, if that's a better result, later is going to be acceptable. You know, I think we can take our time and say, "Gee whiz, give them a moment, give them a moment," but, you know, when does that end? And I'm not going to ask you to say now publicly that you believe they have 90 days or-
I would do that.
I, I think you give a chance to examine it, use their process, use their system, and see how well they do. I think they're smart people, I have confidence in them. Let's give them a chance to, to meet and respond back to this. This man.
Except for one thing, and that is, I think they need clarification on what-
I think $250,000 was a very clear message.
Well, that wasn't clear at our last meeting.
Yeah, we said, we said we could do it cheaper, and I still think we could do it cheaper, we should, because I think that's what we're here to, to make the deal-
And you referenced the, the plan that was originally put forth, and it was $250,000 at that point, so that was your level of contribution that was going to be required. You did it, you put it up there, it's there for them, you know? And I recall people saying, "If it was more than that, I couldn't see doing it." You know, I don't want to go beyond that. Well, you've told them what your number is, they had an original number of a million, that was their $750,000. It had, it's there, it's the play to serve.
I think that there, we don't have a real process of communicating what we talk about at our meetings to then let this discuss with city council, because it's pretty clear, if you had the opportunity to watch the city council meetings last week, that they really, some of them cut flat-footed that we weren't even going to go on our joint meeting. And I think that, you know, there's, there's an opportunity here for us just to step back and look at our processes, at how we do connect to each other. And if this is one particular project where we'd like to invest some time and put a team together that could do a project together, I think that it's, it's okay for us to spend some time articulating what it is that we would like as the board to be the outcome of that project.
I think when you put $250,000 upfront on the deal, and you said, "This is where you are," you sent that message, but that was stated, was very clear, I thought.
So, so many Diana's, but I mean-
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think she went back and said, "They're on board, here we go, you know, what's, what's the next move?" I'm not interested in going to a meeting and lobbying them to do something, they're going to decide on their own. That's what they're elected to do. You know, I've got the park components in the hands of those who have to make that decision, the playground decision is ours. I think that we put that money out there, and it's been said.
So, so you would be comfortable directing staff to speak with the city to say that our board has committed $250,000 to this project?
Am I wrong, or did you already do that?
I don't know.
There, there was communication with Tim Alau, the board action, was in a formal communication now, but I think-
But the message got there.
There was a great deal of conversation about it, I believe, a bit, different members of the council, so somehow that message got transferred, but it may have been transferred to the board.
Well, again, that just, there is a process problem there, because they all of us discussed at their last meeting was, the school board's not going to have a joint meeting, and, and pretty much it's on hold. So, I know you've probably talked to people, I'm sure that all of us have talked to, you know, a couple of council members, but, you know, as a, as a collective body, I think that there's a, just, it's disjointed in what we're communicating to the city council of what our commitment is and what we're looking to do.
I think, you know, not understanding the nuances of how the city council comes with their decisions and how they move forward on their discussion of city facilities, I can't say that they didn't know it and showed us not to, or-
...so much to the district over the course of time. We only have a very limited amount of closed session time on that Monday, May 18th, and that'll be pretty early targeted to labor negotiations, progress and direction on labor negotiations, if there are any other expulsion recommendations, again, so, we'll have to see how that develops, but there we go, we have action at that meeting, which will lead us into the, eventually, all the other events, but then the June 8 regular board meeting, where we'll actually resume to our normal calendar and have action items and a full agenda, so, just wanted to make sure the community understands what our sequence of events looks like for our next couple of meetings that are supposed to be.
Thank you. Any questions on the calendar?
Yeah, I just have one question. I have it down at 8:30, is that one, we're getting there, we're supposed to get to-
This one, we're getting there, that gives us 30 minutes to do it.
So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was on the table.
I know that Mrs. Lyons has sent out an email looking for a little bit of clarification on our structure, I've not seen it, and I think I've been talking to him, I know the process may work, we'll see if he sends out the information for you before that. Hopefully, he will and will share it with everybody. Just a reminder, Thursday, here's your program breakfast.
Right.
And I believe we've got all the reservations then, we're looking to see you there. That does start at 6:45. Joe, I know you're a morning riser.
Probably will wake you up.
I tell you, please, because I mean, I always show up at 7:30. I actually did that one here.
Yeah, you did that one.
Yeah.
I did that one, too.
On number-